This is the start of the Lake County Commissioners' workshop. Is there anybody in the audience to which to address the commissioners? Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Leslie King. And what else did you need? I'm sorry.
Address.
I'm her husband, David King.
631 Madison Avenue.
Erin, a sink, 5 Woodworth Avenue.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we're here because of Madison Avenue closure and our concerns with the closure. We've gone to the trustee meeting. We want to be noted, recorded, heard. We have had, I have had, we have had discussions with the engineer's office. So I do understand that it's at an emergency level. It got closed down. I live right there. I mean, literally, there's the where it's caving in. So I have major concerns, we do, about is it going to get repaired? When is it going to get repaired? The amount of additional damage while it's sitting there with the snow and the water that sits there because there's really inadequate drainage over there. I don't think there really ever was good drainage. With the erosion happening and the fact that, you know, and her house is right behind us on Woodworth. So she's still close. And we have, you know, I watched it get fixed in front of my neighbor's home, in front of the blue house, and saw that and was happy that all got fixed. And then saw that there was like a temporary packing down fix in front of my other neighbor's house. And now this is just watching this crack in the middle of the street just getting wider and wider, knowing that it's, it's all caving. And my sidewalk is caving in. I have like both sides now are starting to sink. There's a sinkhole in my front yard. And so I'm not sure, because the last correspondence I had, it was basically there is, we don't know the plan, Army Corps of Engineers, and we don't have funding. So now I'm even more elevated stress level because I don't want to fall off a cliff. I don't want to lose my home. In 2023, we had a house fire. So the house was redone. So I love my home. It's beautiful. I can't sell it. I can't rent it. I don't know how safe I am living there at this point. So with it being put up as an emergency, how emergency is it really? When I've seen people, and again, I am not the expert, but I've seen drones. I've seen people go down over the side. So I know that it's been evaluated. How long, like, you know, we went to the trustee meeting and I will say this. Mr. Hillier had a conversation with the engineer's office, Dominic Kirk, if I get the name right. Anyway, he said, whatever you say to me.
Kirk Dimick would be my guest, the chief deputy engineer.
Thank you. That's it. And he said, whatever you tell me, I'm going to put it out to the public. And he did. He put it on his Facebook page so any of you could see what was corresponding back and forth with, with the two of them. And, you know, people were thinking, they've heard, oh, is there a possibility to move the river back? Is there a possibility that you would put in some type of a connecting bridge? Is there potential to buy out any houses and move the road back so you don't have that weight close to the road? A lot of heavy trucks come through here. They go down, they whip through Madison Avenue. They go down Woodworth Road. They were going to Sidley's and wherever they're going. Snowplows, they do their thing. They make their turn. They slam the blade down. It shakes everything. So I'm, all I keep thinking is this weight. You know, you fix it, but you still have all that heavy traffic. And I understand it's an engineer's responsibility for this street. But I don't feel like, like what's going to happen? And we're, I'm petrified. I'm not going to lie. And I, like I said, I don't want to lose my house. So I, I do have some correspondence that the last time, some of my questions were answered. I get a little bit here and there. Each time I get a little more, but I don't know, I don't have a warm and fuzzy at this point. And I know that one of the things I asked was taking on damage with the repair. The house to the, to the left of me, the blue one. They put their little monitor out there to monitor the vibrations. And she took on damage. No one was there. They just said, no, we're not, we're not going to be responsible to pay for anything. So that's a concern if and when they start fixing this. Their answer was, we're going to go within the allowable, whatever they're allowed to do from a vibration standpoint. But I need to know. My house is done. So if there's damage, I've already hired somebody. I had a professional retired engineer come in.
Yesterday.
And I've got the report. He took pictures and he recommended we also take pictures too. I have that report that basically says my house is like, nothing wrong with it. So then if they start doing the, because both of my neighbors were told, yeah, this had nothing to do with this. And I don't want to be in that position either. So I just need people to hear that because it happened to them before. And I'm not sure what's going to happen this go around. And that, and again, it's like, does anybody, have you guys heard anything about when any kind of temporary repair might start?
So could I ask questions?
Yes, absolutely.
When you say they put down a instrument and that caused damage to the house?
No, it's monitoring the vibration so that if they, if it got too high, they shut things down so that it doesn't cause damage.
Okay, so as they're doing the repairs, they put us, they put a monitor in?
Yeah.
And if they're doing something, all right, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. When was your last conversation? And forgive me, my last conversation that we had with the engineer was a month-ish into this, maybe? It wasn't right away. I know that there was conversations with the Army Corps that, I also think that there were some funding that was obtained. I was told that we had funding obtained from the, I believe, from the Army Corps that was to be used towards this. And the conversation I had was that whatever the repair is, and I'm not an engineer. So whatever the repair is to the wall, that was going to fix the, the wall essentially protecting from the erosion, was something that the first parts of which could be done in the winter. So I said, all right, well, do we need to do something? Because this conversation was months ago. When did this start? Forgive me.
That's what, one of our questions for you.
When did the road close down?
Well, in August. But what we'd like to know is when the problem was first identified? And we can't seem to get the answer to that definitively from anyone.
I assume August. Whenever they had this issue, I think whenever something happened and there was a separation between the wall.
Well, prior to that, I started seeing the surveyors coming and doing their thing and putting markings on the streets. So that was prior to the August emergency shutdown. And that's what Erin's saying. She wants to know, when do they know this, uh-oh, this is starting to be a problem? When did they notice it?
Mr. President?
Yes.
My understanding is that the county engineer monitors every bridge and every county roadway on a continuous basis. So I don't know when they first saw the seeds of this problem, but they're going to be checking every roadway, including Madison Avenue periodically because by law, they have to produce a bridge report each year. So just because you saw someone checking it out doesn't mean they saw a critical problem. They have to constantly reevaluate.
Okay, yeah.
And I think as I was explaining, once they noticed a problem, once there was a shift or a movement or something like that, a separation, it became a problem is when they then had the shutdown. So I would say in August, as soon as they noticed that there was an issue, that's when they went and shut it down. Our conversations would have been sometime in August or September, I believe, with the engineer. And at that time, we were told that they had some Army Corps funding on an emergency basis because this is being coded as emergency. Normally, Army Corps funding takes, I don't know, whatever, three, five years. As an emergency, it's immediately available or it's available with a much, much faster response time. And I was told that the work could start over the winter because the first work that has to be done is down the cliff, down the wall first to shore up whatever.
Stabilize.
Yeah, whatever stabilizing is down there. And then by that would hopefully be done in time to start to do some things in the spring and the summer of next year to finish up top, basically to get the road back to where it needs to be. I do not dispute the issue of the trucks. I have heard that from other business owners along there that a lot of the construction going in and out of downtown Painesville, it's nice and easy for these dump trucks, whether they're hauling stuff in or hauling stuff away, to go right down that road. And so I have brought that up to the engineer as well, that truck traffic. Clearly, Madison Avenue is an issue with weight. So any construction project that happens to be going on or potential construction project that might be going on just down the road from there, those trucks need to be routed someplace else. And as I understand it, the engineer has the ability that when a construction project is done, they have to petition and say, okay, what route would be taken with this truck and that truck? How are we bringing that stuff in? And so as I understand, it has been my request that any future construction projects that are done, that we don't have large trucks, dump trucks, construction vehicles going up and down Madison Avenue once it reopens. That just seems kind of obvious to me.
And actually, that's one of our concerns too, because Sidley sold that property.
Yeah, yeah, I was being cute about it, but yes.
The future.
When, when Painesville Township does the project, what they're going to be doing there next to the schools, et cetera, et cetera, those trucks need to come in from a different route, in my opinion.
Right. Well, they don't, they won't be able to get through right now.
To that point, right.
So, yeah.
That's going to be a hard one because it's a county road. So when we were in the last meeting, they said that that's going to, pretty much really not going to happen because it's a county road. That's what they were telling us.
Meaning that keeping the heavy trucks off, that, that, we did hear that at the trustee meeting or wherever we, the trustee, yes? And they were, yeah, and they were saying that there's really no control over that because it's considered a county road.
Yeah. I'm sure trustee Hillier has no opinion on whose responsibility what is.
Right.
We'll have that conversation at a separate time.
Yeah.
My point is, is that I believe the county engineer has to approve some phase of a construction project. And I've been told, and if I'm wrong, I'll go back to the county engineer. But when a construction project is approved, the, the routes for the trucking and for the equipment is designated at that time. And so.
That's good to hear.
I don't know if it's a township road, county road, or state road. But as I understand it, that there can be some conversations with the folks doing the construction work that we don't use this road. So, but I will look into that again.
Yeah, because when you were asked, you were talking about the funding. So my last correspondence with him was November 12th. And I wanted everything in writing, even though I've had.
Like yesterday?
Oh, wait a minute. His reply to me was, wait a minute, that's when I, yeah, he replied to me. I sent it on the 6th, he replied on the 12th. So, and, and, and I've had conversations. He's very nice. They were very responsive. They put the snow fencing up for us because, again, third time this has happened since I've lived there and people were driving through the road or the yards and, and that, I was very, very grateful. They put that up. So I want to just put that out there, very responsive. I think the only problem we have now is just, you know, motorcycles thinking that the sidewalk is open for them to drive on and ATVs and golf carts and trying to think of anything. But, but I'm grateful and I've had a few people think they can cut through my yard and, but now it's, it's great. So big tractor trailer landscapers, at the beginning, they drove right through my neighbors and our yard. So that, but then in, it says here, right now, we are being told that there is not any money in the Section 14 program. They are waiting for federal reauthorization. They will begin reviewing applications when funding becomes available. And that is the question I had about the Army Corps of Engineers, what's their plan and their recommendation? That was one of the answers I just got.
Does that have to do with the government shutdown, I'm wondering? So.
I would believe.
Yeah, that, that might be the issue there. Like I said, we were told that there was Army Corps funding available and that, I'm not saying funding was paid for and covered, but it was not, it was not an issue. So if you, and I'm not trying to cut you off, but if we can get your information, if Jen can get your information so that we can have a conversation with the engineer and find out where the project is and then.
Okay, that'd be great.
And then be able to get back out. Because I don't, I'm not a large fan of when roads shut down in this county.
Yeah.
So I, I would like to see us move as fast, if not fast, as fast as possible on this topic.
So if you don't mind, I'd like to speak on the timeline portion.
Yeah.
Obviously, I know there isn't one yet. But the information that we were given at the last meeting regarding farther down the road, where it was retained in years prior, that part of the problem and why they had to revisit that pro, that issue and retain it again was because when they came up with the plan, it was too large of a span of time between when the plan was put together and the work was implemented. So that's what we were told, why it, they couldn't retain it. And the, the project that was supposed to take this amount of time ended up taking this amount of time in two tries. So as residents, we're concerned because right now, as it stands, we can't sell our house. I can't have somebody come look at my house and have no answers for them as to what's going on right over there. So we have no choice but to, to wait for answers. And the timeline for us is important. So that's why we keep bringing that up as part of.
I wholeheartedly agree. And then I apologize, I don't know what the trustees, at your trustees meeting, information was or where it was coming from. Painesville Township unfortunately has a unique dynamic with the Commissioner's Office right now as far as how information is disseminated. And I'm not completely thrilled with that. There are some issues, yes, that need to be resolved at the county level. And I promise you that this is the first I'm hearing about that this is now an issue. As I was told in September-ish, there was a plan and there was funding and there was a timeline. So.
Mr. President, if I could just add, there, there's something of a misnomer where the engineer's office is occasionally, and I, I don't want to use the word excuse, but it is probably the best word to use. The engineer is an independent elected official. He is responsible for the maintenance of Madison Avenue and all the county roads and bridges in Lake County, Ohio. The engineer's office is fully funded under state law. Every project is funded. Now, it's his job to go above and beyond on top of that and to apply for additional funding from Army Corps of Engineers, for grants, et cetera, because that way, less local tax dollars are spent on immediate needs and there's more money to do long-term improvements, et cetera. But really, every project is already per se funded under state law. It's never an excuse to say we're not funded. Money is never the holdup. It's the engineer's job to budget and these are 50, 100-year assets. It's, it's never a surprise that maintenance is required. So to be very clear, if anyone tells you a road project or a bridge project isn't funded, they're lying. It's all funded. It's not your problem whether that money comes from the engineer's annual budget, from the license fees, from an Army Corps grant. It's not your problem. It's not Painesville Township's problem. It's not the Commissioner's problem. His office is already fully funded. So I just, he would obviously like it if a federal grant would pay for this because then he has more money to give his employees raises or to do X or Y or Z. But the truth is, every county road and bridge project is already funded under state law. It's just his job to go above and beyond and try to take some of that burden off local taxpayers where possible. So you should not even waste a moment of your concern or your time on the funding of the project. The project is funded. It's only a question of do we have to use local tax dollars or do we happen to get a grant? We'd love to get a grant, but that's not the issue. The timeline is up to the county engineer. He's the one who bids out the projects, who approves the designs. There is no one else who has the authority to do that. There, there's a reason why the engineer is required to have various licensures under state law. It's an expert position. And so it wouldn't be right for your township trustee or your county commissioner to say, here's the plan, here's the timeline, because we might not be qualified to present a safe and complete plan. In fact, I'm certain we're not qualified to do so. But we will certainly press the engineer to give a timeline as soon as humanly possible because you deserve to have one with the admonition that there are some factors that he doesn't entirely control. I have to be fair there. I mean, he has to do a full and thorough examination because a quick fix that doesn't last is no good to you. It, it's better for him to be thorough and take his time. We don't want him to lollygag or dilly-dally. But at the same time, making you a false promise or rushing and not doing the job well is the worst case scenario. So we have to make sure we give him, we give him the leeway to do his job well because you want a permanent fix for your road. You don't want this to be a problem three years from now, even if a Band-Aid's put on. But the, the one point I really want to make is anyone who tells you there's not funding, I would just ignore that. It's simply not true. The engineer's office has more than enough money in its carryover. If they have to pay for it locally, they can pay for it locally. The goal is always to get grants, but that doesn't hold up the project. And that's why the Commissioners vote to make these emergencies because if need be, they can just go ahead and do it.
Okay. Thank you.
The Commissioner, that's the action we've taken. And I'm going to look to legal and make sure I get this right. We declare that an emergency, which allows the engineer to go and get a bid and not have to do a, wait for three or four or five people to come in. He could pick the person that does the job the right way and go with that without going out to bid. So it should speed up the project and things. I'm honored to understand and I'm hoping it's still the case is all the engineering of that is happening now, including the Army Corps. And if you have to deal with the Army Corps, unfortunately, I've had to in the past. They're not the fastest place to do a business with. So I'm hoping that, being that this is an emergency, that they're, they can feel that need too. So the last thing we like to do is close a road in our county. And so I, I would hope that they're working diligently to, you know, get that prepared and go. But I believe Commissioner Beveridge is right. He did state that they could, that, you know, we're looking for a winter start or things they could do during the winter.
Once again, now I'm getting even more aggravated because I guess a 45 or 40-day government shutdown is directly affecting your timeline. Because if we have to work with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Army Corps of Engineers isn't at work because they've been furloughed for 40 days, then I apologize on behalf of all competent elected officials.
Yeah, I didn't think of that either. I mean, and I've just missed the furlough. I'm one of those where I made it because we're in a different fund. I'm like, woo.
Right, I just, so that might, that might have also caused some problems over the last 40 days plus.
Yeah.
I just have one additional thing that I wanted to speak on, not expecting an answer, but I don't feel like we got what we were looking for in regard to emergency response, especially to Riverview Elementary School. Madison Avenue is a huge, you know, we, we were all there for the incident that happened last fall. My, my husband is a state trooper. He was off duty, but he got in uniform and responded. And saturation, when there's an active shooter or, you know, perceived active shooter, is what you do. And I just, I, I would love to know how that would look or if there's a plan in place for how that should look. So just something to throw out there.
As far as how emergency response would get to the school?
Yeah, so.
Top of my head, they would have to come down Bow Hall, right? I mean, that's the only access road getting into Madison Avenue from there. So I'm, I mean, I do not work in emergency services, but yes, to your point.
Just something to throw out there.
To your point, there's now one access into that.
Yeah.
Right? Which is something that frustrated me when I heard the stories of Ford Road in Madison, that you basically had islands where people, you know, to get to there, you had to reroute Perry and Leroy and Madison all had to work together and potentially reroute their emergency services for mutual aid to come and help on that situation. Because once again, for whatever reason, we didn't have the proper funding in place. Cut, you know, I understand the conversations of the past, but for whatever reason, that became a holdup with that road repair. And as I understand it, there was a semi truck that got stuck in a ditch and blocked off homes. You couldn't get in or out. And, you know, children had to be held at school because the bus couldn't get down the road and parents couldn't get out to get their kids from school. So these are, these are why these issues of road closures, especially on Madison Avenue, to your point, that is, you know, there's only one or two ways into that area. That's why it's so important that it has to be moving as fast as possible. And so I, I apologize, this is the first I'm hearing that this is not moving as. And once again, engineering work has to be dotted and this has to be. So we will look into it and have a conversation. And then if you could leave your information with Jen, then somebody will reach back out to you, I can promise.
Okay. Yeah, and just one last, I'm sorry. Now that all the traffic is going Riverside, just definitely, that's coming up, that cliff is caving in as well. Just putting that out there on the record. And I know the engineer's office was aware of that too because that is, if you go down there, it's right there. So just something to think about, all this heavy stuff and that road is, you got that river that's just washing out the, the bottom, the bed or whatever you call it. And it's just eroding that. So anything up here is going to come tumbling down. So, and that was, again, it was like, that's why I was like, was there, and it's a rumor or could they potentially move that river over so it stops pounding the streets?
I think it was.
Just something.
We're not allowed to remove a river.
No, I, I know, but some, but someone mentioned over by Riverside that the, the, the river did get diverted a little bit when they were doing the railroad thingy.
Mr. President, I, I'll just add that in the past, we were allowed, and by we, I mean, local governments to be a lot more aggressive in moving bodies of water. Both Ohio and federal EPA are much more stringent today. So a lot of the projects you saw in the past where rivers were moved or, you know, large bodies of water were drained or added, you wouldn't be allowed to build a roaming shore today and just make a lake. I mean, moving rivers, what have you, were, were pretty restrained. And that's part of the reason why the Army Corps is involved with every single bridge. They want you to have the absolute minimum impact on waterways. So we're not moving. I, I can tell you right now, without even having a conversation with the engineer, the river's not going to move.
Okay, the road could move. The road could move.
So anyways, I'm retired. So I, you two are probably close to my age or if not my age. This was our last home. We put our heart and soul in every dime. We actually, after the fire, we had a thousand dollars left in our savings account because we had to put some of our own money, $37,000, into this home out of our own pocket. It was built in 1850. Love our home. Don't want to move. Love it. And I hope you can understand how we feel because when you get to my age and you, you look at your outlet and you have goals and you meet that goal and next thing you know, you're looking at sinkholes, we're afraid. So please take that to heart and understand our positions, please. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else with us who would address the board?
Yeah, my name's Philip Haskell, 4600 Lane Road, Perry Township. And I know you and I know you live in Perry, correct?
I live in Perry Village, yes.
Well, that's all right. It's Perry.
I'd love it to be one Perry, baby.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. Yeah, well, especially if the data center gets put there, right? And I'm not here to talk about the data center. What I, what I actually came over here, I came over here yesterday actually to check the building out and talk to a couple of people and see if I could catch one of you guys in the office and you particularly because of your expertise on taxes and your initiative to be working with, I guess, the legislature on trying to get some tax reform, property tax reform. And I thought, and I'm not against what you're doing, although it's big. I mean, that's, that's a big thing. If you eliminate property taxes, everybody's going to go insane because their funding mechanisms are all gone for local. They have to come up with something else. Well, naturally, they will. But what I was thinking, and I'm working in a group of people that are in the upper 70, 80, 90-year-old groups. We bought our homes whenever, in my case, it was my parents' home from the, from the 50s. And it was worth X number of dollars at that time. And of course, there's been tax reappraisal, tax reappraisal, tax reappraisal. Well, the last one that the county auditor.
Yep, that is.
Was a biggie, was real big, real tough. I heard him talking back there. He's got all kinds of opinions. Well, that's fine. I liked him when he was a township trustee, but now I'm not so happy. But the thing is, seniors who have had their kids go through school, we've got even, don't even have grandkids in school anymore because they're too old to even have grandkids in school, have been paying their taxes all these years with no hope of freezing those taxes. You have homestead exemption and that helped. But, and I hear there's some kind of consideration to do a bigger homestead exemption.
If I could jump in, it's not just consideration. Actually, at our last Commissioners' meeting, the three of us unanimously voted, because we were given special authority under the last State House budget, House Bill 96, we unanimously voted to double the homestead exemption. So whatever you've been receiving, you're going to get twice that benefit starting on your next tax bill next year. We also doubled the owner occupied. We also doubled the owner occupied credit, so right now, you're getting two and a half percent off your taxes, because you live in your home. Next year, you're gonna get five percent off. Now, I fully admit that that's not enough, it's just the, it's just the only thing state law gave us the authority to do. So number one, we have done what we can do right now. Number two, I, I think I sense where you're going, because I think our positions are actually a lot more similar than you might realize. What I've said from the very beginning is that abolishing property taxes is the second-best solution. I say it's a shame that the people of Ohio are being forced to collect hundreds of thousands of signatures to do our state representative and senators' jobs for them. They should be voting today to give relief immediately, rather than forcing us to work on a solution that at best will take effect years from now, even if everything goes well, which will require, yes, completely restructuring Ohio's tax code. What I've said from the very beginning, and you could go back to an op-ed I wrote in twenty-twenty-three, what I've said from the very beginning of this problem, is we all know our taxes are gonna skyrocket, because they go up with inflation. And we need to do two things. Number one, we should have a one-hundred percent property tax exemption for our seniors, so that once you turn sixty-five, and I would include disabled veterans in this too, you know, seniors, disabled veterans, once you turn sixty-five, you're done paying taxes, period, on your principal residence. Number two, for everybody, there should be a freeze in your property tax value to your sales price. So the value of your house is what you paid for it, what a willing buyer paid a willing seller, not what some county auditor staff comes up with. No matter how great a county auditor they might be, they're forced to follow state law, and state law says prices go up with inflation. We've had record-high inflation in the last forty years, so it doesn't matter who the auditor is, your value was going up. I say that's wrong, and I say that our value should be what we paid for our house. And when the next person buys the house, yeah, the value will probably go up, but that's fair, because that's what they paid. So I think if we made those two small changes, if our state legislators would vote for a one-hundred percent property tax exemption for seniors, and freeze property tax values at sales price, what you paid for it, for everybody, young and old, I think most of us could live with the system, and we'd leave it at that. But to date, the state legislature has refused to make any substantive reforms. And the only reason I feel like we're pushing them in that direction is because they're thinking, wow, if I don't start to do my job, I might lose all the money, all the property taxes should go away. And, and I would encourage you to think about signing that petition, because I think it's the only leverage we have on the state legislature to get them to do their job.
Okay, well, that, that, that's excellent, and you just informed me of a couple things that I wasn't aware of. But your, your thinking is right in line with where I was, have been telling people all along, when I said, now, this, this blanket elimination of property taxes is not gonna fly, just because it affects too many entities, it takes away too much money from the public.
And by the way, you know how little it would cost to give every senior in Ohio a one-hundred percent property tax exemption? Well, we actually have a very solid number, because there was a state senator from Mahoning County who proposed a fifty percent property tax exemption, I think he was copying off my notes, he didn't wanna go quite as far. So he said, what about a fifty percent, and he had the Office of Legislative Council cost it out, and it came to one and a half billion. So it doesn't take a math professor to double that, and say, if you gave a hundred percent, it would be three billion dollars. Now, that's a lot of money to you and me, but in the grand scheme of a budget of over one hundred billion, you know, that's less than three percent of Ohio's budget, it's very doable, they give away more than that, and, you know, tax abatements to businesses every year, many times more. They could certainly afford to do it. I believe we will get reform, but we're gonna have to push hard, because getting government to part with a penny isn't easy. Government never saw a dollar, didn't wanna spend.
No, yeah, I agree with that, I agree with that. I was a trustee for twenty-eight years, so I know how government likes to spend money. Uh, well, thank you, thank you for that, and, um, I'm not sure where the petition is to sign, but I certainly would sign it.
Well, I can tell you, locations are updated for every county in Ohio at AxOHTAX.com, so if you just go to A-X-O-H-T-A-X dot com, you'll see where the closest signing location is to your home.
Okay, all right, well, excellent, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, the other thing I was gonna mention, and I, and I, as I listened to the disaster over on Madison Avenue, I figure I'm in the wrong pew for that, other than I've got some, well, I don't have, I'm not a, I'm not a trustee anymore, but I, I've got some residents writing on Facebook that they would like to have a bicycle path down Lane Road, down Narrows Road, into the village and back. And with Sheets redoing their store down there, and IGA is down there, that's our quote-unquote city center, almost down on the Endelane Road. A lot of kids were going back and forth, and Narrows Road is a particularly bad road for going up and down on a bicycle, because it drops off pretty bad for the nursery and all that. So I told them, well, you should contact the county commissioners, and they can see about a grant, well, you're got, you are not the guys to see for the grant, we would have to go see the engineer's office for a grant, and talk him into it. And I don't know, I don't know him, I've never served at the same time that he's been in there, because I've been out of office for twelve years.
Oh, he is brand new, Mr. Axley actually started January of this year.
Well, I didn't have a great relationship with the other county, county engineer, so.
I'm not sure I did either.
So I will, uh, I will refine my statements and tell them, go see the county engineer, and try and, try and convince him. I'll, I'll say really, well, this one guy says, well, let's just get some, uh, asphalt rubble and level it along, no, that's not gonna work for bicycles or anything like that.
And I will say this, we had these conversations a lot in Willoughby Hills, where I was a councilman for three terms, and it is almost free to put in a bike path when you redo a road. It costs almost as much as a road to do it on its own. So the way you get a bike path is you get it on the schedule, so the next time the road is redone, they just put the bike path on right next to it, and it costs almost nothing. On the other hand, if you try to just put it in, it costs almost as much as a new road. So the way you get bike paths is you gotta get on the list and say, listen, next time you repave, we want a bike path next door.
Yeah, and they just did Lane Road, and widened Lane Road, and so they're, but they're gonna be doing more to Lane Road, because what they, they did with that bridge over to ninety, has increased the traffic, and the railroad tracks have brought traffic down there to a screeching halt. It seems like every time I turn down Lane Road, and I've lived there all my life, there's a train, and about one out of three is stopped. So you're not going anywhere for fifteen or twenty minutes, and that's very, I mean, it's irritating, at, at the least, and I just either head for Park Road, or head down to the village, and try to buck around it. But that's it, I've been doing that for seventy years, and it's like, geez, maybe we can get something done. But anyway, uh, thank you for giving me a opportunity to address you gentlemen, and see your beautiful building. And, uh, I'm impressed, I'm impressed, it's quite a, quite a, an experience walking in here and walking around it, compared to the old commissioners' offices.
Can I just ask, did you see the map of Lake County downstairs in the lobby?
Yeah.
Isn't that nice?
That was impressive, too.
That was actually inspired by the map room in the Ohio State House, where on the floor, they have a whole map of Ohio, and they divide it up based on counties. And we were invited to go down and see it when they brought in a new electronic display. And we decided to make the map of Lake County, where instead of dividing up the state by counties, we divided up the county by municipalities, inspired by that map room in the State House.
Yeah, well, yeah, everything about, everything about this building is impressive. I know you guys didn't start this building, but you're, you're here now, and you're benefiting from it, and I think it's an outstanding, outstanding structure.
Thank you.
People are the best part of it.
Pardon me?
The staff is the best part of it.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Chad, this is your chance.
All I'm gonna do is just look at my, uh, so-called NFL team, you don't wanna.
Well, they are, they are my third favorite team, so I'll lament with you.
You start at the bottom, work your way up.
If the Browns are one of those three, you're, you're in real trouble.
I am, in real trouble. Browns, Panthers, and Giants. Yeah, I know, it hasn't been a good couple of years.
Well, I will call this meeting to a close then.